And this is public live or is it closed session?
It's public, it's a work session which so it's live streaming, it is a public meeting, but it's live streaming, so there's no public discussion.
Where is it being live streamed?
YouTube on CR, Engage CR YouTube.
All right, that's good to know.
Good evening and welcome to the December fifteenth, twenty twenty one Board of Education Special Board Work Session. The meeting is now called to order. My name is David Tominski. I'm the current President of the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education. And on behalf of our entire board, I'd like to extend a special welcome to all of our legislators who have joined us this evening. Before we get, uh, begin, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
I second.
And any discussion? I'll turn the meeting over to Laurel for roll call.
Director Garlock.
Hi.
Director Borcheting.
Hi.
Director Newman.
Hi.
Director Roundtree. You're muted, Marcy. She's not here. All right, we'll move on. Uh, Director, excuse me, President Tominski.
Here, um, I.
Here.
Here. Is that all of us? Uh, as legislators prepare for the upcoming twenty twenty two Iowa General Assembly, we are honored to have the opportunity to share and discuss the district's legislative priorities. We look forward to a fruitful discussion tonight. Um, I, I think we all know that there's some weather coming our way, so I just want everybody to give each other some grace. So if we do need to drop off for any reason, for, um, I definitely just want to make sure that we're, we're aware that there's a pretty good reason for that. So I think our plan is to have this go probably no later than six thirty, possibly complete even sooner than that. So at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Vice President Garlock and Superintendent Bush to lead us off.
Thanks so much, President Tominski, and I'm going to quickly hand it right over to Vice President Garlock, but we thought what will we do tonight is give some context of the Urban Education Network and Iowa Association of School Boards. Uh, just a bit, some big picture priorities for the context of our collaborative efforts across the state and then narrowing the scope down to Cedar Rapids data. And then how we, how we're contextualizing those priorities based on our data and needs as a school district. I think that'll take us about fifteen minutes or so just to give this team some context. And then the hope is from there, we've got some working document tools to really have open dialogue and feedback from our legislators from your lens and what you're hearing and understanding or clarifying questions for us as a school district. So again, thank you so much for your generosity of time and brains and efforts and advocacy for public education. And we just greatly appreciate you being here tonight. So why don't we start with adding some context of that bigger picture priorities from an urban education network and Iowa Association of School Board lens and I'm Director Garlock, Vice President Garlock, I would be very happy to pull up the U E N website first and that might be most helpful. So I'll hand it over to you.
Sure. Okay. While Superintendent Bush is pulling up the U E N website where you can all find more details, um, I do want to also include the Iowa Association of School Board priorities. And as we go through these, you'll see that there's a lot of overlap between I A S B and U E N. I think four of the five priorities in each group are fundamentally the same. They use some slightly different verbiage. But it, they address the same issues. The I A S B has an additional priority that U E N doesn't, and that is dropout and at-risk funding. And I would say, and Noreen will correct me if I don't have this exactly right, but I don't believe that that's necessarily an issue for Cedar Rapids. I think we're receiving the maximum amount of funding that we can. Uh, so that's an issue more for other school districts in the state. So the, the five I A S B priorities, dropout at-risk funding, mental health, teacher recruitment and licensure, school funding policy and supplemental state aid. So pretty straightforward. If we move on to the U E N priorities and Noreen has pulled up the, the website here for you to look at, they also have five, five priorities. And like I said, most of these are overlap, but just to keep things less confusing, we'll be focused mostly on the U E N priorities tonight. We have, um, investing in Iowa's future. That is, um, includes the supplemental state aid. U E N is asking for five percent SSA. Um, and I think you all know I A S B traditionally does not ask for a particular number. Uh, but U E N is asking for an SSA of five percent. We have to have appropriate funding if we want to compete with private sector. I think we all know, especially with our paras, what has happened this year. It's hard to find para, paras to fill those positions because they can work elsewhere for more money, less responsibility and less stress. So fortunately, at Monday's board meeting, we were able to give them a raise. Brings, brings all the paras up to fifteen dollars, but that's going to continue to be a problem for certified staff and all of our other staff as well. So SSA is always at the forefront. Another of the priorities is what they're calling student opportunity equity. Um, and this addresses the achievement gaps for E L L students, minority students, low income students, at-risk students. It also would include protecting, uh, funding for preschool. We, we know that the pandemic funding that we've gotten from the federal government has certainly helped, but we need ongoing help and support. We're finding that our students have, you know, there's some definite achievement gaps and we're not going to fix that overnight. So we need some long-term solutions. Staff shortage is the third priority as we just talked about. How do we keep people in Iowa? And I think that issue goes beyond just the public education system. As you legislators know, there are a lot of things that make Iowa attractive or less attractive. But, uh, we need people and we need to be able to pay them a comparable wage to what they would find in the private sector. And mental health. That was, uh, a priority for us before COVID. And I think COVID has only accentuated the need for more supports in mental health. And again, uh, our S R funds, our pandemic relief funds are helping us with that. But again, that's, it's an ongoing situation that's going to require further funding. And then the, the last one from U E N that was not on the I A S B list is what they call district authority. And it's what we call local control. And you guys know that as public education funding has been at risk, our board here in Cedar Rapids has made very clear to legislators and to our governor and to the public that we believe the people closest to the community should be making decisions. So we are heavily invested in local control and trying to reestablish local control. So Noreen has put the website here. All of these priorities from U E N are here individually. And each one of them has, uh, an issue brief associated with it that gives you some facts and figures and some very specific information about why these are priorities. So that's the overview of priorities and Noreen, I'll hand it back to you.
So I'll just share quickly on the screen, one of those issue briefs, just as an example, that anyone could use these as resources. This is the issue brief for opportunity for equity of high poverty students. So just give some background and some additional resources. And so greatly appreciate the U E N team for putting those issue briefs together. And many districts, we had the opportunity to have input on, uh, the content of those issue briefs. So those are great resources for all of us. So thank you for that, Vice President Garlock of the high level of you. And so we're going to contextualize that into our current state of Cedar Rapids. So what I'd like to do is start with some of our enrollment information and our demographic information. Enrollment information is going to give you some context around state supplemental aid requests specifically for our district as well as, um, uh, our focus on equity and our focus on reaching all of our learners requires a different level of resources. And so we'll contextualize that as, as well. So let me, uh, share my screen with you with some Cedar Rapids, um, data, uh, some overtime data. So can you see that word document? Okay. Great. Awesome. Let me make, let me just blow that up a little bit if I can. I'm going to start at the top. Sorry. Here we go. So we're going to start with just Cedar Rapids enrollment and demographic history. This just gives you just some quick high level context over the past twenty plus years. So you can see way back here in nineteen ninety seven, uh, we were at seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five point five students. Um, and that's a total, um, enrollment. And then if you come to, um, last year, this, this graph does not include, um, this year's certified enrollment. So this would have been at the end of twenty-one, twenty-two. It's sixteen to thirty-six. And so you can see obviously the drop between these two years that is due to pandemic and derecho experience for Cedar Rapids. But just over time, you can see what our enrollment, um, decline has been. And then if we look at the next graph, this is going to give you context of our open enrollment data. And so this is percentage, uh, data. And so, um, if you look at our open enrollment in and open enrollment out, this is the open enrollment out graph and this is the open enrollment in graph. Um, not quite as much, um, disparity between open enrollment in, although certainly it's had a drop over time. But open enrollment out has more of had a significant, um, increase. And then if we go to the next graph, again, this is just another, um, context. This is just the net percentage of open enrollment for us as a school district, which is, has gone from negative one point four percent to a negative, uh, seven point two percent. So that's when we add open enrollment out with open enrollment in, that's that net percentage. Free and reduced lunch. I find this data very interesting. Um, and this is going over the past twenty years. Free and reduced lunch percentage in two thousand and one, Cedar Rapids was at twenty-six point one percent. And so here we are, uh, two decades later. Our percentage is now fifty-seven percent. And so we are a majority district of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. This is for our English language learning population. And so in two thousand and eight, which was really the most, um, recent, uh, when we compare apples to apples and how we've counted students. This is the most recent data point would be in two thousand and eight. Uh, we had one point three seven percent of our students, uh, were identified as, um, English language learning. And now we have seven point one percent of our students that would be identified as English language learning. And the next graph is, um, our immigrant percentage as well. We've gone from in two thousand and eight, from point one five percent to now two point seven percent. And again, that's two point seven percent of sixteen plus thousand kids. And then, um, in regards to race, very challenging for us to do, um, a, uh, an overall slide of, um, of multi-race or other races as that's increased over time for us in regards to, um, different races and, and, and how of families and children are identifying themselves within that race. So what we did is we looked at our majority race of white and what is the white population done over time? And that's been a constant for us to be able to pull out that particular demographic. So in two thousand and eight, seventy-nine point five percent of our students were identified as white. And today it's sixty point three percent of our students that are identified as white. And then lastly, just looking at enrollment from a very specific lens, and that would be from our early learning, um, kindergarten enrollment lens, which many times tells us, um, ju- also, um, um, potential correlations with birth rate, but also, um, families who are entering new to our district. And many times what we're finding is once they're new to our district, they stay with our district. So that kindergarten enrollment is really important for us to keep an eye on. So we wanted to show you this data. And that is, um, our pre-K enrollment, our kindergarten enrollment and our grade one enrollment. So the green line will show you, this is our preschool, um, enrollment, pre-K enrollment. The blue line here is grade one enrollment and the black line is kindergarten enrollment. So a question might surface is why is first grade enrollment uh, lower than kindergarten enrollment? And that is because we have some additional programs in kindergarten, that being alternative kindergarten, where kids might have more than one year of kindergarten because they do alternate, current, alternative kindergarten, then kindergarten and then first grade. And then also some families, um, uh, request that, um, two years of kindergarten based on the child's developmental needs. So that explains, um, that particular gap, uh, over time. So, uh, that gives you just some data context of Cedar Rapids. And then now lastly, the last information we'll share here, and then we'd really love to open it up for discussion, is, uh, applying some of the U E N priorities and I A S B priorities, understanding our context of enrollment and our current demographics to then where we are now and what our requests would be for advocacy, um, this year legislatively. So I'm going to stop sharing this. And before I actually go on here, I see there might be some things in the chat and maybe some clarifying questions. So let me go to that first. Okay, I think we're okay. All right. So I think what we'll do lastly then, um, is just share a little Cedar Rapids context. And I'm going to fly through this and then I'll put, um, I'll send the links to these documents as well for our, for your use after this meeting, of course, today as well. So let me get that document up. And what we've done is we tried to do some comparisons here of, um, what we're finding is a lot of what we're advocating for as a school district is very much with the governor's also prioritized as she's, uh, certainly coming out of the pandemic and, um, and certainly looking at workforce development and mental health. We're very much in alignment and wanting very similar things. And so we wanted to make sure we showed that alignment. So here is, um, our context of just our major priorities, uh, as a school district. So you'll see here, this is what we'd be contextualizing as our priority. And over here, you're going to see the governor's priority. And then maybe what we would say is the reasons, the rationale why we would be asking for, um, the things that we're asking for within those priorities. So, um, Director Garlock, uh, already really explained, you know, the staffing shortage. And so this is very much in alignment with the governor's, uh, reemployment, strategies as well as her advocacy for getting people back to work and workforce development. But we just wanted to highlight, this is the reason why we as a profession have to be esteemed as the profession that prepares all other professions. And when our teachers and our educators and all employees who work for school systems are prioritized by the community as the, the profession that lifts up all other professions and prepares the future workforce. We know our place in, as childcare provider for the workforce. We know our place in career tech ed and advanced manufacturing and preparing future leaders of our, of our state. And we also know based on our demographic in Cedar Rapids that we have a very diverse community. And as every employer who I've spoken with says they want to diversify their employee workforce, we are that tool and we are that partner who can help with all those priorities that have already been stated by the governor. So that's articulated, so just some additional narrative here for those strategies and rationale. But as I've heard some of you speak as well about, um, different strategies and things to consider, we're wondering about, um, ways to lift up and, and prioritize our profession. Love the suggestions around student teachers, perhaps having, um, a stipend or a salary during their student teaching to attract people to the profession, but also this is a paid internship and instead of them paying tuition, how can they be compensated during that time? And then is there a possibility, especially from the U E N, the way they've articulated the three point seven five plus one point two five SSA? That one point two five being, is there a way to have childcare benefit for educators? So if you work for our system, you also can have a reduced fee for, um, childcare or as a childcare benefit. And for us to be able to increase the wages for our childcare providers. Secondly, second major priority area is early learning. For us, preschool is it. And when we look at that data chart around preschool enrollment, kindergarten enrollment and first grade enrollment, we would love to see that preschool enrollment chart at the same rate as kindergarten. And having every four-year-old have access to a free preschool education, which prepares them for kindergarten readiness. We know what the research says of what that will do for every child on the learning component. Or from an equity lens, that also removes all financial barriers for our families to have that. And then from an economic point of view, for our workforce to have access to, um, childcare for every four-year-old. And then maybe we can start working on the three-year-olds. Um, also that aligns with, um, the governor's priority. And to quote her, when we remove the obstacles to high-quality, affordable childcare, our families can nurture their kids while maintaining freedom to enter and remain in the workforce. We completely agree. And how can we be a partner in that work and therefore have it funded through our education system? And then mental health, um, I think, uh, Vice President Garlock has articulated this well already, but we just added some statistics around what the mental health needs are, we know, um, across not just Cedar Rapids Community School, School District, but all districts. And we need to continue to increase that access. And we know that the CARES funding provided, um, additional opportunity for us to provide additional services to our, to our families. We've now invested, um, and prioritized out of our S R dollars, over two million dollars towards additional mental health services, not just from last year and this year, but what we're projecting for the next couple of years. We think that that may not be enough. Uh, we know we might need more, but that's going to take care of us through the S R dollars. What's the long-term strategy for us to continue to maintain mental health needs? Because I'll say this, the pandemic, there will be long-term needs as the pandemic, but even prior to the pandemic and prior to the derecho, we had increased needs for mental health supports for our kids. And we've continued to find funding through grants or through other partnerships, but we need long-term funding strategy for that. And then finally, our focus on equity and that, um, when we look at our data, and I highlighted that again in the middle of this column, we've gone from twenty-six percent free and reduced lunch to fifty-seven percent. We've gone from one point three percent English language learning to over seven percent. And we know that's going to continue to increase as we understand, um, the resettlement of maybe perhaps our, um, immigrants from Afghan, uh, refugees. We know that this is going to continue to increase as our community embraces, um, our immigrant families and our refugee families. And then, um, so within that context, we are increasing our needs and we're supporting a more diverse, diverse population. And we appreciate the current context of S R funding, but we are looking for long-term strategy support. And to develop our future workforce, our community, our economy, but most importantly, the kids that are in front of us today, having every opportunity to learn and grow. So that's it in a nutshell for Cedar Rapids. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and we would welcome feedback, conversation and your, um, support of, uh, of your, your thoughts around all this. So I'm going to mute myself and can also assist in, uh, managing the conversation as President Tominski can as well. So leave it at that.
Superintendent Bush, I'm wondering if, um, as we talk about preschool, if you could review our current status of preschool and childcare and what potential we see in the near future using Truman. Could you review that for everyone?
You bet. So, um, Truman Elementary is currently, uh, one of our smaller elementaries, but as we've had our facility master plan implementation, we have, uh, two new, uh, sites. So West Willow opened this fall. Maple Grove will open next fall and the students that are currently attending Truman will, um, uh, attend one of those two new sites. So we've gone from three elementary schools in that geographic region to two elementary schools. And then Truman was intended to be repurposed based on our current context, our belief in early learning, but also the needs that we're finding within our families. We have, um, determined to make Truman an early learning center. So what we will be doing is taking some current programs that are, um, throughout our district. And many, some of them are half-day programs. Our families are telling us they need full day opportunities, uh, for their children. So half-day program and wraparound childcare services is, uh, we did that for five classrooms this year using, allocating some S R dollars for that in a proactive way. And so now we're looking at taking, um, some of that programming to one. And so now we're looking at taking some of that programming to one site location. With a we right now, we have district level support for our preschool programs. And they're overseen by the principals in particular buildings. We're going to designate a principal to all preschool programming across our district. To make this a very focused priority. So I what we imagine is this is a west side location right now. The belief is that this, we hope that this will grow. And that we would also have perhaps an east side location or a north side location or a downtown location. To support all of our families and access to preschool. So we have a lot of classrooms, one or two in many of our elementary schools, but not every elementary school. And the the goal is to increase access and for everybody. So dedicated resources and dedicated spaces for preschool programming.
This is Tracy Eller, I have a clarifying question, I'm sorry if you went over it already, I'm just, I was subbing for Kids on Course, so I'm just kind of getting on and driving home, so. To clarify, the early learning center then that's going to be at Truman is, does that mean like? The elementary schools that currently have preschool classrooms on the west side? Are they going to be moving to the Truman building or is this even additional classrooms?
Yes, it's both, but it's not affecting all preschool programs in every school. We're looking for just a starting place and we have some capacity issues in some of our schools that. Need a little more wiggle room and so that's one one piece. But also it's this all day wraparound services as much as we can in one particular location as possible. There will still be half day programs and many of those will still be in our elementary schools. And so we are working with elementary teams and and principals. To try and reach the best decision about which of those classrooms will be relocated to this particular center. And admittedly, this is just initial conversations, a lot of the nuts and bolts are, we're still working that out.
Thank you.
So this is Jennifer Porchning and I just want to comment a little bit, I know there's a lot of crossover between U E N and I A S B. And when we were talking about mental health and kind of looking for some solutions there for some ongoing funding. I A S B has put forward has proposed and one of the priorities slash set of priorities there. Will be pursuing this year would be a creation of a categorical funding stream designated for mental health professionals. Serving students and ongoing teacher administrator and support staff mental health training. Additionally, expanding state funded loan forgiveness programs. To include mental health professionals who agreed to provide services to schools. And trainings that include a referral plan for continuing action provided by mental health professionals outside of the school district. So I just wanted to share that because I think that that adds a little more depth to the conversation. And it provides an opportunity to maybe consider those as ways to kind of move forward to continue to to provide our students and with positive mental health.
This is Representative Art State. I wanted to tell you all, Noreen, you specifically and the members of the school board are doing a wonderful job. Heroic efforts over the last year and a half. We've watched what you what's been going on and appreciate all the work that you're doing. And I also believe you're right on track with the priorities. You seem to understand them well and I would do anything I can in the legislature to support them and hopefully we can deliver.
Thank you, Representative State. Thank you very much, and what I'm doing is I'm adding your comments to this working draft, that three column document. We'll make it nice and pretty and beautiful for you and a little more of an infographic model, this kind of our draft work. And so that it hopefully is in your hands to to help that advocacy, so greatly appreciate that support.
Liz Bennett, do you have your hand up?
Hey folks, I just wanted to say to the members of the school board as well, thank you for all of your efforts. You know, you see the issues that are going on in the schools with the lack of funding. Much more than most of us do, you know, aside from Representative Donahue and Representative Eller. One of the things that I'm wondering about, you know, because when I when I hear this information. My biggest drive is, well, let's fix this. You know, I I don't want my friends to continue to leave the state. You know, when we talk to people about moving here to work for my company. You know, we want to be able to talk about the school system and of course I want our kids to have opportunities to start here and go anywhere. So you know, the biggest roadblock has been. You know, the the agenda of the folks who are currently holding a trifecta in the legislature. You know, so you know, we of course, obviously, you know, for years and years, everybody on this call. You know, has been going in and speaking on the floor and begging and cajoling and pleading. You know, for our colleagues, you know, to do the things that you're outlining here. To no effect because that is not part of their agenda and in many cases, you know, runs counter to their ideology. So I'm just wondering, you know, whether. You know, the the state organization or you know, even if you're connected to a larger effort. You know, to figure out how to actually motivate more voters to vote on issues like this. Instead of the issues that seem to be motivating their choices at the ballot box. Because at the end of the day, that's what it's going to take.
I I'd like to just kind of build on that if I could, so. As so I also said on the Iowa Association of School Boards, I'm a board of director there as well, on the board of directors there as well. And it's through conversation and collaboration with colleagues that are representative of districts from all across the entire state. We have the same issues, all the rest of the districts have the same issues, it's just a matter of volume. Intensity, just based on density of population, but it's they're the same issues. So I I think that interactions like this and conversations like this with local legislators. Helping all legislators across the state understand what these issues mean to their constituents. It is helpful to kind of have that full community conversation regarding education. So it's my hope that I A S B and U E N will will reach out to to their district members. And and share opportunities like this.
And then do you do you have any information, so for example, we've seen in the League of Women Voter Forums. You know, that only certain people are attending those forums, so. Is there any information statewide, you know, I I think there's a pattern here on the call here today. Do we have any information about who is actually attending these types of forums in other school districts across the state?
I don't have that information, I I don't know if I A S B has that information or not, I don't think so. I would hate to say that they do and then not have them have that information, so I I'm just going to, I I don't know the answer to that question.
Gotcha, well, well, I just, you know, I want to say again, you know, thank you to you and you know, thank you to the rest of the members of the school board. You know, for all of the work that you do, the valiant fight that you are fighting, you know, on behalf of our students and the future of the state. And I just hope that you know that you are appreciated.
Thank you much, and I just to echo Director Porcheting, I'm not sure if we would have that exact data. Every single, if there was work sessions like this, there would be documentation of who is actually in attendance. And I also know that many of the A E As host legislative forums as well and would probably be able to perhaps document that. But I'm not sure if that's actually streamlined to one space and place. But we're we're aware of who's attending the work sessions that that we're in and the forums that we're participating in. So at times greatly valued and we love seeing you all and and being able to touch base. But yeah, I don't, I don't think that there's that documented information anywhere. Get some other hands out there raised. All right, Liz Mathis, I see her hand raised.
I think Representative Donahue was actually had her hand up before mine, I'll go after her.
Okay, sounds great, thanks Molly.
You could have gone first Liz, it's okay, but thank you. I just wanted to, you know, jump in there and and you know, some of this has already been said and obviously. We don't have in a lot of differences between the rural and the urban needs in education. Where we are lacking employees, both in teachers and parents. So this is one of the things that maybe with the U E N and and I A S A B is I A S A B. Working with them, they also have legislators in those rural districts. That should be fighting to make sure that their kids are getting those education. And so what I was just going to say is that by partnering with them and having them, hopefully they are also pushing out in those areas that maybe a little hard. Typically more to the other party. To keep this in the forefront and maybe push them and pressure them a little to make sure that everyone is getting what they need. Because obviously they can't just give more S S A, well, I suppose God forbid, but they can't give more S S A percentage to the rural versus urban. Even though, you know, we I'm saying that and I hope to God they don't suspend any rules. But that is, you know, so if they're fighting, if they're fighting for the same things, hopefully. That will that will help us in the urban area.
Representative Donahue, you give me a thought that perhaps. Using the database from Teach Iowa and the current open positions here midyear. Cumulatively across all districts in the state could be very leveraging data. Or as I say, this is the number that we have as in contrast to say, three years ago. This is the, this is the difference in the data, so that's helpful information, I'll add that note.
Additionally, as far as teacher recruitment and licensure, like I A S B has a couple of thoughts of that as well since since again across state, we are all looking to hire. They're proposing for some reciprocity agreements with other states with high quality education programs. So as to increase employability and diversity amongst certified teachers and administrators. As well as as looking for some expansion of programs such as Teach Iowa Scholar, Troops to Teachers, Teacher Intro Program. And others as approved by the Board of Educational Leaders.
Senator Mathis, do you want to go next?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. We know that there's a teacher shortage and a thinning in our teacher pipeline. And also a retention issue. An onboarding issue and sustainability through that onboarding issue with teachers. So when when I would meet with Shannon Biscart over at Linmar, you know, and and Noreen, I meet with you as well, you know, before each legislative session. And Doug Wheeler as well and Janelle Brower. But but I would ask Shannon, you know, what's what's your top priority? So you know, six years ago, seven years ago, he said, you know, wages and benefits, number one, wages and benefits. And then as we progressed a couple more years, he said, well, I lose sleep over safety issues, you know. That the school is not the community place gathering place that it used to be, it's, you know, the innocence is gone. Metal detectors and talking about school shootings and things like that, he was worried. And then over the last, I'd say before COVID. That year and then last year, he said to me, teacher shortages. And so he gave me an example of how many applications he had for openings prior to COVID, maybe even seven years ago versus what he has right now. You know, fewer, much fewer and Noreen, you probably are certainly experiencing that, it's not a new, you know, it's not a surprise to any of you. And so what was unique was then this year he had a special ed opening and one application to Linmar, right? One application to a huge school. So I I, you know, for the last couple of years, I've put in a teacher shortage task force, you know, and it was never picked up by the majority. And then the chair walked over to my desk last year and said, go ahead and do it. Collect the information, you don't need to do a task force and we'll we'll take a look at what you find. So we put, I did a cross section of schools that we talked with. So we put Linmar and Marion together and asked the superintendents to draw administrators, parents, students, teachers. You know, anyone who had what they would think would have good feedback, but to limit the conversation to about twenty people. So we could have a really good, very productive, solutions based conversation. So we started with the problem, you know, and the barriers and then of course the solutions. So we went to Linmar Marion, we also went to West Delaware and Manchester where Kristen Ricky is the superintendent there. And we asked the parochial school principal to come as well, had had a good turnout and. And and all of our Lynn County legislators participated and that was terrific. And we also asked, you know, it was a bipartisan, so we asked Republican legislators to come too. And Mike Bergen actually attended one of ours in Howard Wynn, so we went to Howard Wynn in at Winneshick in Cresco. So the conversation, there was a common thread certainly through all of these conversations and it was one of exhaustion. Our teachers are exhausted and how that pertains to their own personal mental health. So we're very well aware, that came across loud and clearly. And then as people were talking, there were more ideas around the the policy things that we could do that are not expensive. But there are certainly things around those barriers to be to hiring for superintendents and 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 for principals. And so we're taking a look at a laundry list of those and some great ideas came out of out of these round tables. Then they use the example of Noreen, you've already already talked about it, about student teachers being paid. You know, I mean, let's face it, they're paying for four hours or three hours of credit, right, for their student teaching. Then they're going to student teaching, they're spending the entire day there and then at five o'clock running to their jobs. To try to pay for the tuition to come back, you know, and work for free, that's kind of crazy. And the liability on that, you know, when you're not paying a student teacher, what's the liability to your school district? So we have to think about those things too. So everyone was in agreement, we have to change something around student teaching. And that was just one of the things that we talked about, just a laundry list of other things. But it was very interesting, when we got to Cresco, you know, they're about fifteen to twenty minutes away from the Minnesota border. And there was a woman there, she was a parent, but she was also a nurse. So you know, the healthcare industry has paralleled the same as what the teacher shortage, you know, exhaustion. You know, just a whole different way of trying to do things over the last two years where COVID is concerned. And so she actually worked at Mayo Clinic and her her kids went to Cresco, she lived in Cresco. So she had some really interesting things to say about working out of state. We also had one, a teacher who had worked in Cresco and was working in Minnesota and then came back to talk to us at this round table. Very interesting around collective bargaining, around wages and benefits, around subs. One of the students said, one day she had four teachers in forty five minutes. And you know, and and are the parochial school principal said she never did have an application for her fifth grade class. So she's teaching in the morning and she has a retired teacher in the afternoon and she's very concerned about lesson plans and not being able to administrate. So we've got all kinds of scenarios going on out there, but what we're trying to do. Is then collect this information and work with the Republicans because Chris Cornoyer is also doing. Something slightly different on work on teacher shortage. We're going to collaborate, see what it is that we can agree on and make sure that it's to the benefit of the student, right? Definitely taking into consideration what's happening to our teachers. And and how difficult it is for administration to find quality teachers in a window of time, right? Just in a window of time and to try to keep teachers from walking out at the end of the year. Some you some you have a handful of retirement, but others are just saying, I can get a job down the street for more money and less and less pain, right? So so we've got it, we've got to change up on this, we have to be concerned about this and focused about this. And get everybody at the legislature looking at this because it is of critical mass right now. And when we talk about worker shortage, you know, now I'm preaching to the choir, when we talk about worker shortage. You, all the workers go through school, so so first and foremost, we have to have teachers in order to produce the workforce, right? in order to produce the workforce, right? So that's the, that's the issue, you know, it's not a subset of the worker shortage problem. It is the set of the workforce shortage. So we start with that and healthcare and, and everything else. If the governor can pour money into manufacturing and do future-ready 4.0 or manufacturing 4.0, we should be putting some time and effort into growing our workforce in both teaching and education and healthcare. Those are priceless commodities to our, our, you know, community here. And I think all across the state. People will believe that. The other part, one other thing I want to bring up is about mental health. And today I talked to a healthcare group, it was a, it was a big group of nonprofits that the epilepsy, epilepsy foundation, the Alzheimer's foundation. And, and a number of other people, NAMI, that are concerned about mental health and how it's paid for. Last year, there were a whole bunch of people behind mental health being paid for with sales tax. And now we have the majority party talking about cutting income tax completely and surviving on sales tax. And there you go. Our mental health system is going to be paid for with sales tax. It's not going to cut it. You know, because now you're going to have all kinds of people vying for that sales tax to try to pay for things across the state. We made a warning, we told people that mental health should be paid for locally and we meant it. And so now we have a huge conundrum if the majority party decides to go, you know, with, with cutting or eliminating our income tax. We've got to be very focused on that because again, first and foremost, our kids are going to suffer. Our teachers, our workers are going to suffer. And we have to make sure that that's priority one, that, that we're delivering on that. And that's, that's my stuff and I'm sticking to it.
Senator Taylor, I see you have your hand up.
Well, thank you. Well, first of all, I wanted to say, just like my colleagues, thank you all for what you do in our school board. And I almost feel like I should shout thank you at you so that you'll understand that that's apparently how people talk to you nowadays, which I'm sad about. I wish we had more civility at the Capitol than in our school board meetings, but thank you for what you do. And as it turns out, as I speak at the, the stage of the call, my good colleagues here, which I'm very happy to have served with, have, you know, covered a lot of the topics, but I'll just touch on a couple of things on my mind. Similarly, th- this afternoon, I got to meet for the first time co-president David Hayes. And we talked about higher education funding and Iowa tuition grant, et cetera. But we also talked about the need for mental health for college students as well as staff. So that's an issue that I, I'm glad to see on your priority list from earlier. I don't have that slide in front of me, but also feedback from the priority list. It's not the first time ever that we've heard, obviously, the connection between funding for education and workforce readiness, but I love the idea of very appropriately saying to partner with the governor's plan and her direction of we, we need to deal with the workforce shortage and keep people back to, to, to work. Let's use our educational funding mechanism as the tool to help get that done. I know that's not the first time you've ever used that. I just love that it's there now. It makes sense. Oftentimes, you know, we have fought for higher funding for K-12, say, and the pushback that we get is, we did do more money than last year. But we want to see growth, we want to see change, and we know that there's a certain dollar figure that you have to spend before you get the increase that you need to cover. And then as Senator Mathis pointed out, you know, the, the shortage, whether it be parents or teachers, teachers, educators, we, we, oh, by the way, Kirk Coe has a good program on that. They were happy to share that with me today. Locally, good, good college level program. We don't, what we don't want, I think, is to kind of turn into Florida where we see the state addressing their shortage problems as, hey, have you got a bachelor's degree? Let's put you in the classroom. I think Iowa's model, and I think what, if we spend more money appropriately in K-12, our model will be and should be that we want to connect people to, to teach them how to teach. Instead of just knowing a subject or having a basic level of education. So again, that's, that slide priorities is not in front of me. I think it's in my, I think you, you've linked it on chat. I'll, I'll, click on it again, so I have it. But I appreciate the work that you do as school board members. Oh, and, and Vice President Garlock, I wanted to also say, thank you for clarifying. At first I misunderstood you and you clarified it, but it was, we need this dollar figure necessarily because we're competing with the private sector. One of the things that we're dealing with at the Capitol is, and at first I thought you were talking about private education, which I know you're not. It's about your parents and your other staff, they can get other jobs at a higher wage just down the street. So I thank you for clarifying that. I do understand. Anyway, that's it. Thank you. I'm going to turn my face off again.
Senator Hoag, I think you had a few things to share.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. Well, thank you all for this and I appreciate the overview and the chance to discuss. I wanted to start by thanking you for doing what you can to protect our students, our staff and their families from the spread of the coronavirus. That is just critical. We've had over 35,000 kids in Iowa reported with coronavirus since the start of the school year. I would bet you probably had another case in Cedar Rapids School District this week. I would just go out on limb and guess that that's the case and, you know, whatever you can do to help slow down the spread of the deadly infectious disease, really do appreciate. Hey, I want to, I, I know a lot of it, and I, Senator Mathis did a fantastic job talking about the workforce, the school workforce and just excellent work there. I, I, I have a, I have a different little additional perspective I'd like to share, which is, you know, everybody's worried about, you know, the kind of the worker shortage right now generally. The demographics that you showed were striking. Right? That is, you know, that's just since my kids started kindergarten. Right? I mean, that's a, in a generation, we've lost over a thousand students in the Cedar Rapids District. Think about how much more it would be down if we didn't have immigration and immigrants coming into our community. And, and by the way, you're not alone. I mean, that's a, I bet if, I bet you could go around the districts around the state and they'd have very similar slides. About the decline. And, and so if I were a baby boomer, which I'm not, I've just missed the baby boom, and so I'm an almost baby boomer. I'd be thinking about, you better invest in education if there's going to be somebody to take care of me in my retirement. I'm going to need people at the hospital and in the care facility, and I'm going to need people to, to, you know, provide the food and entertainment that I want and the, you know, the, take care, you know, who am I going to call when I need somebody to come in and take care of my house or when I want to buy something, right? I mean, we, we don't talk about the demographic transition nearly enough. And it, what, but it, what it says to me is education really is critical because if I, you know, it used to be 20 years ago, you'd have retirees say, well, I don't want to support schools because my kids are grown. Now I think retirees might be your number one advocates because I want to support schools because I want somebody to be able to take care of me as I get older. So I just think about that as a, as a potential advocacy strategy. It, it really has changed. Final thing I want to say is, the state of Iowa's got the money to support education at 5% or 6% or 7%. You know, the state's been short, or yes, I mean, the state's been shortchanging education. You now see that when the state says it has over a billion dollar, billion dollar annual surplus. Well, that's money that should be invested. Doesn't have to be every dollar of it. We got plenty of money to invest in our schools. And you know, I'm, I'm going to be 55 next month, retiring next year from the Iowa Senate. I want somebody to be able to take, help take care of me when I get older. So I'm going to vote for every dollar for education that I can. I just wanted to share that and thank you for all your work. Stay safe, let's invest in our future and hopefully we can have a better 2022 than we've had 2020 and 2021. Thank you.
Vice President Garlock, I think you're the hand up.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you legislators out there in Zoom land could tell us who the chair and ranking member would be for the education committees in each chamber? Do you know that off the top of your head?
The chair in House is Dustin Height. And the ranking member will be Sharon Beckman.
Sharon Beckman, where is she from?
Mason City, she's from Mason City.
Okay. Do any of you sit on that committee? The House Education Committee?
I do.
Tracy, okay.
And I'll be ranking member of Education Appropriations this year.
Oh, okay, cool.
And, and Art sits on that committee too, I believe. Policy, Art, yes? Or Props, policy.
Okay. And how about on the Senate side?
Ed Approx.
It's for policy, it's Amy Sinclair. And the ranking member is Herman Kornbach.
Okay.
And the appropriations chair is Chris Cornoyer. She's from the Bettendorf Quad City area, I think maybe Leclerc, around there. And Amy, Amy Sinclair's from Knoxville.
Okay.
She's moving to Des Moines and we're not sure about that. And Herman Kornbach is from Ames. And I'm not sure, Rob, who's the ranking member on Ed Approx? Is it, I don't know, is it Claire Celsi? I don't know.
I, I, I can't, I can't remember off the top of my head, although remember for, in general, the Ed Approx has a role to play for K through 12 schools. But the primary funding, as you all know, for K through 12 schools is through the S S A. So, and that comes through the policy committee. It obviously has to, you know, gets, gets into the final budget discussions. And there are a lot of things in the education budget bill that affect K through 12 education. So it is important to work with them.
Okay. Have you guys heard anything about priorities once you get back to the Capitol for the session?
I think Senator Mathis hit the nail on the head, which is their priority is to eliminate the state income tax. And, you know, that's on the Senate side at least, that's what we've heard. And so we're going to have to, you know, make the case that, hey, we gotta, we gotta have diverse revenue sources that we need to meet our obligations for public safety and public health and education. And how to stop shortchanging our schools.
To jump in on that, I can see that we discussed the fact that they do want to eliminate the income tax. And one of our top-notch guys, David Jacoby, is a tax guy. And he said that it was going to take, if they were to do that, for us to have the funding that we'd be losing out on, they would have to raise sales tax to close to 15 cents on the dollar. And we know that our low-income families cannot handle this. They, they're already struggling to buy food for their families today. To raise that is just crazy. It's going to affect so many different people and, you know, regressive taxes do not, do not help us here in the state. So that would be a travesty if this actually gets through. I will tell you that I keep hearing that the governor still wants that trans bill. So we will see if that comes back up. Outside of that, they're pretty closed-lipped right now.
Just saw that Jackie Smith is the ranking member for Ed Approx in the Senate. And she's from Sioux City.
Okay, thanks Liz.
Any additional comments or questions from the group?
Sorry, I'm going to throw out there, the other, the other things that we know that they're coming for are the books on our shelves. Because they're, and I think that's coming out of the Senate mostly. But they, they definitely are having a problem with that. So that's a big thing that they're going to be coming for and, and well, as you all know, since you sit on your Monday night meetings, they're coming for those masks, but I thank you for standing up for students and for teachers and keeping us safe because I can tell you for a fact that I was sitting with a kid who has COVID all last week and the last two days. So we're hoping I don't get it, but, or anybody else in the area, but, but there's so much of it around and I'm, I'm sure that I'm exposed to it every single day, as is anybody who's in the classroom. But I thank you for standing up to these people. And, you know, I got some rather startling information this afternoon that we have over, over 1,700 different COVID denial Facebook groups. And just 910 of them have been developed since August. I mean, the list just goes on and on. And we have something called the Dirty Dozen. There are 12 different major groups funding them. Just lots of information this afternoon that I received about what's actually happened behind the scenes of, of these groups and anti-maskers and anti-vaxers. So, you know, but here's the good news. It's about 500,000 people total across the country. So that is not, I mean, that's a lot of people, but it is not a lot when you look at the total number here in this country and how truly most of us feel and, and what we believe in. So thank you for doing what you're doing.
I, I just want to add on that. I've been doing some research on it. The masking appears to be quite effective in reducing the viral load. When, when there is coronavirus, it may not prevent you 100% from getting it, being exposed. But it does reduce the viral load, right? That is increasingly significant as we try to get through this thing without, you know, we had another, state reported another 130 deaths today. That's as many people as die from heart disease and cancer in a week. And it is, you know, so this is not, you know, I was thinking, well, maybe it would stay the third leading killer in the state, but you know, it looks like we may be shooting back up the period where it might be the number one killer again in Iowa like it was a year ago in November. And we really need to do everything we can to safeguard people and keep the viral load down and, and keeping distancing as much as you can in the schools. Taking those masks on is really, really helpful. And obviously getting vaccinated, getting a booster when you can. So.
One of the others, one of the other stats we got, just since you brought that up, Rob, COVID is now in the top 10 diseases that kill children as of this week.
I just want to chime in with everybody else and say, Sierra School Board, thank you so much for all you do. It is a thankless job. And yeah, Monday night was, it sounded like it was pretty rough. I didn't get to see any video, but it, you know, just stand tall, throw your shoulders back, do the right thing, you know what to do. And Noreen Bush, you're an amazing person, you're a force of nature. And congratulations on the award. You're deserving of that and all more, even more. Thanks for your leadership.
Director Board, Shane, did you have a comment, question?
No, I'm, I'm going to hold it.
Any other questions, comments from the group? I don't want to teep it. Did you have any parting words, Superintendent?
I would just say, same to everyone. Thank you, your input analysis and even just what you're hearing from others is just so helpful for, for us. And so I took a lot of comments and we'll tweak our, our Cedar Rapids context and we'll issue that document to all of you. So this is really beneficial for us. And here you're thanking our team and absolutely great gratitude for our board members who are the ultimate volunteers for our, our district. But you, I always say, it takes just tremendous acts of courage to put your name on a ballot. And thank you for having that act of courage and thank you for your advocacy and ultimately for us and our lens, you know, this is always going to be our lens, it's about our kids. And whatever we can do to help our children have every opportunity, that's what we're looking for. So thank you for helping us with that advocacy. Greatly appreciated. And we'll follow up with. And we'll follow up with some of those documents, um, for, for your reference.
Yeah, I echo all of that, I, um, certainly, I, I think on behalf of the board, we certainly appreciate your kind words, but, uh, know that we're sending those right back at you. Exactly what Superintendent Bush said, I, I do, I, I think just being a servant leader in this community is one of the most rewarding and humbling experiences that I know I've had, and I think the rest of the board would, would share that, and I'm sure that's something to share with all of our legislators. So, I appreciate everyone taking the time, uh, to put this together, um, and, and spend an hour of our night, uh, together. I think a few of our board members, and I think Representative Bennett, you had made a comment about this earlier, if there's other districts and other representatives that are interested in doing this kind of work, you know, we have a template, and we've done this a few times, and we'd be more than interested in talking with anybody that's interested in putting this together in their community, so if you hear that, uh, as you're doing your work, um, please just, you know, shoot us an email, give us a call, um, we'd be happy to kind of talk people through how to do this in their community. I think it would be wonderful if it was happening more across the state and across the country, so.
And I would encourage out of the ISB districts in District Six, which there's 50 districts, to contact either myself or David Blot to, to request some information on, on how to move forward.
Yeah, the more often we're talking to each other, the more we can accomplish, I strongly believe that, and I think, uh, I think we all do. So, with no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for participating tonight, um, be safe out there. See ya.